Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, the Lord in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to say our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can you roll call?
Mr. Detrow, Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerick?
Yes. Okay, item number four, accept agenda and addendum. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mike Humphrey.
Roll call.
Roll call, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Yerick?
Yes. Okay, item number five, I have a special report. I want to read Dennis's letter first, and then we'll go into the motion in a second. Dennis Detrow dropped this off earlier today at my office. Just says, "Rowling Hills Local School District Board of Education. Please accept my resignation from the Board of Education effective February 24th, 2022. It has been a pleasure serving the district." Short and sweet, I don't have anything to elaborate. I do know Dennis has went through some family issues, you know, I know he just lost a brother recently. But there again, let's move on to a motion to accept his resignation.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Humphrey.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerick?
Yes. Okay, item number six, nomination and election of 2022 Board of Education President. Do I have a nominee?
Well, I'm nominating John Yurak.
Mr. Singleton?
Earlier anymore?
No, you're stuck.
Okay. It is recommended that the nominee nomination for President of Rowling Hills Local Board of Education for calendar year 2022 be closed. Do I have a motion?
I'll move. Mike. Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Yerick?
Debstein.
Okay, then you got to do it one more time. So the vote for you, yeah.
The vote for John Yurak as President.
Roll call.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerick?
Debstein.
Item number seven. Nomination and election of 2022 Board of Education Vice President. Do I have a nomination?
I'll nominate.
That was Mr. Humphrey.
Any others? Okay. It's recommended that the nomination for Vice President of Rowling Hills Local Board of Education calendar year 2022 be closed. Motion.
I'll move.
Mr. Humphrey.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dudley. Roll call.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Debstein.
Mr. Yerick?
Yes. The vote for Darren Singleton as Vice President.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton? Mr. Yerick?
Yes. Okay, we don't have to go through that again, it's listed on here, do we?
No.
No.
I thought we had.
No.
So now you're just.
Okay, number, item number eight, public participation. At this point, I'd like to call on Brian Stoney and Mr. Tom Kenworthy.
Thank you, newly elected President.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity to come in. Some things last few weeks have been called my attention. I've been away from you guys for a couple of years, I can't say it's not been enjoyable. There's more fun over here than there up there. But in all seriousness, the two things that, they're kind of related. But I'm trying to figure out or ask, because I haven't been told. I saw that congratulations are in order, you're retiring.
Thank you.
So that's awesome.
Thank you.
That way you get your trailer off my lot.
Yep. That's what I need to talk to you about.
But mainly, I haven't seen any postings for your replacement. So I was, we usually have a pretty robust process. We'll go out and put a posting out, and we get a lot of good candidates internally and externally, and we do the thing. So I don't, is there going to be a posting, or what have you guys got planned?
Well, at this point, we don't have a posting scheduled. I will take your, your advice under advisement, but at this point, we don't have any posting. Under Board of Education policy, I don't know that there's a policy in there that reads that we have to have a posting, so therefore, the board's going to look at it. We do have an executive session tonight, again, and at that point, we're going to discuss this further. But there hasn't been anybody set in stone or chosen at this point.
Having said in your seat, there is a best practice, but you are correct, there's not a hard rule. So you have to go it one way or another.
Yeah, so I'm going to take advisement from the board tonight, and we're going to discuss this later tonight and kind of move from there.
Okay. And the second part, I hope I'm across. Okay, the second part's related, but it has to do with general hiring. We were on the board, we had, again, a pretty robust process where we put a team together of people, because not many of you up there are educators.
Yeah.
And I wasn't either, so I'm not being critical. But there are people that are really good at seeing what areas are good for a teacher, for example, or an admin's going to be there for a long time. And you want to make sure you get the right people and the best people in place. So I, do we still have that type of process where we go through? I'm assuming we do, but I don't know.
And honestly, up to this point, we haven't had to, we have had groups that interview and do the, basically advising who to hire, you know?
And making recommendations.
Yes, make recommendations, but up to this point, it hasn't been a real issue. I mean, we've had the groups in the past, and we voted, and so I don't foresee anything changing.
So we're still following pretty much the same urgent center?
Yes. Yeah.
Can I have John to last? Since Mike and I weren't on there, was there application taken for a superintendent for Mr. Golding?
Uh, actually, there, no, there wasn't.
Actually, he came available.
Yeah, it was one of those situations where we filled the seat and we didn't.
And trusted you guys made a good decision.
We trusted our decision.
What about Mr. Caldwell?
You were open on board, weren't you?
Yeah, but they're talking.
I thought most themselves.
Mr. Caldwell?
I was the only one here at that point. There was an application process for him and an interview. I was part of the committee, so I can answer on that.
Thank you.
That's really all I've got, guys, just trying to check on some procedural things.
I understand.
We always got blamed for nepotism and things like that, and so I want you guys to be blamed for the same type of stuff.
I understand, that's like I said, we'll take it under advisement, and up until now, until we do an executive session later tonight, it's just open. Mr. Kenworthy, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. Extending on what Mr. Stoney said. First of all, Mr. Golding, congratulations. Thank you. You've done a great job. Thank you, appreciate it. There's a lot going on in the district, and you've grabbed it by the horns. Well, thank you. There's going to be a lot going on. Yep, appreciate it. I, among Mr. Stoney said, I think you guys need to really open this up and find a really good qualified candidate, because we're going to be building the schools, and we're going to be doing a lot of things. Maybe someone that has been through this, and done this type of thing, you know, would be beneficial. It's, it's a big job, and I hope we can find someone equally as qualified as Mr. Golding. I just think he did an outstanding job, I was on board when he came here first time. That's right. In the past, the hundreds of practices the previous board was questioned very strongly by some of you folks that are sitting up there now. And it's nepotism and favoritism, and this and that, and harm family, and I certainly hope that we don't resort to this. You know, I hope we're above this, again. I'm not knocking anyone, I just feel like that on one hand, you're critical, but on the other hand, you're going to do something else. And that's, I think, why we're here, we have the best interest of the district, you know? We're still, we're not locked into it, but we're still part of it.
Still paying taxes.
Still paying taxes? Yeah, and, and, you know, we'd like to have our say, but it's kind of hard when you sit and you were criticized for something, that you turn around and do it yourself. So I guess that's why we're here.
Well, up to this point, we haven't made any decisions, so I don't know where you're at with the fact that we're doing it ourselves. I mean, there has been no decision made, you know, like I said, I stated, we're going to discuss this later this evening.
There's talk.
Oh, yeah, there's always talk, and you guys went through that. There's always talk, and regardless of what decision we make, I feel that the board we have here now, at this very instant, was very capable of making a good educated decision and living with our decision.
I think you made a wise choice, Mr. Golding, I really do.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah, I don't mean to jump in, but at the time, I mean, it was a little bit different situation, didn't have as much time, right now you've got six months maybe, so that's, that's my thought process.
I understand.
We don't know who's, we never know who's out there, right?
Yep.
You throw the net out.
Well, like I said, we'll take this under advisement, and we'll talk about this tonight, for sure.
But when you get through the agenda, and you see things that we were accused of doing that's on the agenda, kind of disheartening, I'll be honest with you, it's very disheartening.
What are you speaking of?
So if you can't read the agenda, then you'll.
Something must stick out to you.
Yeah, it sticks out, you'll come across it, and if you don't know.
Are you talking about hiring a relative of mine?
I have no more to say.
I believe it's what you're doing.
I have no more to say, and I'm not going to sit here and argue, I just, I just feel like that it's going against everything that the previous board was accused of doing. Can I follow on that?
Absolutely.
Mr. Wheeler, myself, and two teachers interviewed for one English position last year, and we thought we were interviewing for two at the time, but the teacher came back for four months to finish her time. Sidney Singleton was hired at that point, but we filled her in some full time sub until this teacher finished out her time.
That was my question earlier, what the process was.
Yeah, there was four people in that committee, two administrators and two teachers.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Okay, we'll move on to administrate, administrators' reports. Shelley isn't here, so we have Gail Thomas.
Okay, I have a few dates I'll give you afterwards. First of all, I want to talk about our math program, and one of the strongest parts of it is a Reflex program that we started four years ago, five years ago. One teacher wrote a grant for it and got it in her room. The second year, we bought it for all of the second grade, second grades used it. Now I think we also, I know we also have first grade using it. But Reflex is one of the toughest things for kids to learn, is their multiplication tables, their addition tables, subtraction, but mostly not multiplication and divisions. Through, kids have been curveball. So I just want to show you that this is a computer program, it's differentiated, so it doesn't matter where you're at, your kid can use it. You can get it at home, but we let the kids take it, and it also works out great for those remote days, because kids can actually do a math lesson, and they get rewards from this program. And, you know, so they, it's like a video game for them, but they are actually learning their times tables whether they want to or not. So it's kind of neat, but, and then you get all these reports on it, like this class that I'm looking at, they started out at 4.2% on addition and subtraction. They are now, as a class, at 59.2%. So it, it, you know, it's amazing how quickly they learn. And then we do things like, you know, have a piece party for them once they get all of them. We have one child that has already blown the system away. He knows all of his addition, all of his subtraction, all of his multiplication, and all of his division. Okay, that's only one, but we'll have a bunch by the end of the year.
Hopefully, hopefully, Gail, by the time he graduates, he, we may, our treasurer might be retired by then.
That's a good point. Okay, but this.
I have more than like 10 years.
I just want to go to school.
But this pyramid, the kids get copy of this pyramid, and they can see exactly the ones they know and exactly what they don't know. And if they don't know something, the system pushes it back and makes, makes them do it until they do, and they don't get their little badge or their reward or whatever they all really want to get. But it's a super program, it has all these charts, it's really easy for teachers to read, and I, I can hear so much excitement coming from those areas up there that are using this program during math. It just, it just almost makes you just, you got to stop and smile, because it's just great, you can just hear them learning all over the place. And I'm just thrilled, because we didn't know what we were going to do, because if kids were not learning their facts, but now they are, so it's wonderful. Kids can go as fast or as slow as they want to with this program, and the continuity between regular days and remote days that gives them something systematic. They know how to do it, they pull it up on their iPad, and their parents are amazed, they're like, wow, I didn't know a kid knew all this shit. But it, it's great. It works for students who are autistic, it works for students who have any kind of problems. Even kids who have behavioral problems will sit down and work on Reflex, it's, it's that kind of a program. And I asked second grade teachers recently, because they've used it the longest, I said, if I tell you you have to give up something this year, what will you give up? And she said, if I can keep one thing, I'm keeping Reflex. So the teachers are really sold on it, too. Now, I will go ahead and tell you some things that we've got coming up. In the first week of March, we're going to have a literacy and STEM event, and it will be for two days during the school week, during the day. And kids will get to read books, come to some STEM activities to go along with their books, and we will invite parents to come in if they want to. April 5th, we will be doing a drive-through screening, as we did in the past, and that's one of those things that came out of COVID, because we had to do it that way. That was, the beauty of it is, we should have been doing it that way all along. You know, they come in, they pick up a packet, they take it home, fill it out, no stress, so, you know what happens? They fill the whole thing out, they don't, they don't skip parts because they're trying to rush. So with that, we give them a week to fill it out, bring it back, and then when they bring it back, my secretary and I are out there, I'm collecting the packets and writing them down, she is scheduling their screening appointments. So then, we don't have to do 50,000 phone calls, trying to reach people, because we have the paperwork they can't get a hold of them. So they have their screening appointment when they leave after they drop the packet off. Then, the following, let me see, on April 27th and 28th, we will be doing kindergarten screening, which our kindergarten teachers, our title teacher, our some of the aides help with that, but maybe putting all the kids through kindergarten screening, and it actually gives us a ranking of where they're going to start, really helps with making classes.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, what dates was the kindergarten screening?
When?
April.
It is the. April 27th and 28th.
27th and 28th.
Two days of.
As you have to do it right. Okay, thank you.
So we're trying to get out of your way.
And that's about all I have.
Thanks, thanks, Gail. Okay, secret elementary, Dawn Air.
Some programming notes, we had 60% of our students complete the Snuggle Book of book Principals Challenge, and they were treated to a craft party, which I think the kids enjoy doing something a little different for a reward. Our next Principals Challenge will be the March homework madness challenge, where we'll be focusing on nightly homework, and having the students sign off, or their parents sign off on that. And we'll have a similar challenge, I believe it's going to be cookie decorating maybe for them to do, with a little basketball, kind of along with the March Madness theme. We are finishing up our fundraiser, we had 75% of our goal met just with online sales, which is awesome, we'll be finishing up the paper copies this week. So I'm foreseeing a Kung Fu and a PJ party at school in the very near future. Another programming note, we are getting ready for our, and this is a new project for us. It's going to be a parent-involved activity, and it's going to be a special person's dance literacy night, and the tentative theme is getting jiggy with Lit, for those of us that are kind of in that time period, you can get that. We'll be teaching an Irish jig, some other dances, we'll have a crazy corner for parents to read with their students, we'll have a photo booth, there'll be a book giveaway. Our home in school is also going to do a concession stand for us, so we're hoping for a fun night for the parents to come out with their student, and enjoy just a fun evening with some books and some physical activity, so we're hoping that that goes over well. Curriculum notes, our Star Mac for first and second graders, we have 86% of our students at benchmark, so that's a very good point to be at right now. For our Alexia, our computer reading program, which helps improve our literacy scores, at the beginning of the year, we had 66% of our students below grade level. Right now, we have 9%. So at 91% of our students right now are at or above grade level in Alexia, which is, that's a major improvement in Alexia, and that's something we use daily to help improve those literacy skills, so we're very proud of that. And I think that's it. Oh, kindergarten registration for us is also the 5th, and we'll do a drive-through just like Gail, and our screening will be May 5th and 6th.
Thank you, Dawn.
You're very welcome.
Okay, Meadowbrook Middle School, I think Mr. Golding has something he wants to read.
I do, they couldn't be here, but they sent this over, three things. Real world, real money, financial simulation in conjunction with the Ohio State University Extension Office was presented to all eighth grade students. This is an eye-opening experience that helps students realize costs versus wages and how finances work in real life. Special thanks to our eighth grade social studies teacher, Steve Norman, for coordinating the event, which is a great event to have for eighth graders. The Meadowbrook Middle School Makers After School Program resumed on January 31st, sorry. This is our 21st Century Grant Program that has a variety of activities and experiences in the areas of science, math, and technology. It also brings in community groups such as The Wilds, Jurassic Park, and Caleb Graham Productions. Makers meets Monday through Thursday from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Big thanks to Sarah Burris and her staff for running this program. And the last thing is, they wanted to remind everyone that the eighth grade Washington DC trip has been finalized, and as long as it is approved tonight, the trip will be March 16th through the 18th.
Okay, thank you. Meadowbrook High School, Mr. Detrow.
I just have some updates, I know there's a lot of presentations. We just hired our career navigator, Maddie Frayley. She worked for Total Action Hiring for five years before this position, and will do well helping students determine their future plans and making those plans a reality. Our sweetheart dance, or winter formal, however you want to word it, was successful. I'd like to thank Amy Zuris, Kathy Hessen, and Mindy Detra for their work on that. Ski Club's been on two trips after numerous cancellations, kind of a new thing, and they're figuring it out, but Grant Data started that, and it's going well, they're going again Monday. Tomorrow, Congressman Troy Balderson will be in to discuss career opportunities and options for those going into public service, for a slight group of kids that have shown, you know, announced in those schools. That is third period during advisory, so 9:30, it's like 9:36, but right in there. Parent-teacher conferences will be March 10th from 2:00 to 7:00, and we will meet in person and virtually again, so we can accommodate more parents. And I was informed again to remind you guys, Coral Patrons Dinner is March 6th. Make sure if you haven't got that in, to get it in soon as possible, I got yours. I just went to your wife and just.
Good, good note. Okay, Athletic Administrator, Mr. Wheeler.
Yeah, I'll be short-tweet, because I know Michael's here, and his presentation's going to be a lot more exciting than updates. And I'm glad to be here, I think this is the first one this year, because I went back and looked at my calendar, and the first board meeting, we haven't had a home athletic event all year, so. But believe it or not, spring sports start on Monday, and numbers are great. Our participation numbers right now in high school and middle school track are larger than last year, and we've got a large group of kids out for baseball, softball, so that's exciting, because obviously athletics is an extension of the, of the school day, and the more kids that can get out and participate in that stuff, I think there's great value to that. Girls' basketball finished their season last Saturday in the sectional final, they got beat by Dover at Dover, we did cut it within five in the second half, we had some chances, but just couldn't pull it out. They finished eight and 15 on the season, so a couple more wins than what we had last year. The bad thing is, we're losing a couple of great seniors, the bright spot is, we only had two seniors, meaning there's a lot of underclassmen who got a valuable playing experience, so expectations are going to be high next year, and I'm going to do my job and role as far as putting some pressure and make sure that we get the most out of the program. Boys' basketball is currently 20 and 3, MBL, small school champs again, and we play Saturday in the sectional final, 7:00 over at, over in, over in the gym against Indian Valley. So hopefully, we can have another deep run in the tournament, but as some of you are aware, tournament's not always easy, and so we'll take it one game at a time, because I'm glad we get to play tomorrow. And wrestling sectional is this Saturday, and they go to Studentville. Projected probably three to four wrestlers who will go from sectional to district, and then once you get to district, anything can happen, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping in a couple of weeks, I'm actually going up to Columbus and getting to see a wrestler or two at stake, because we haven't had that opportunity the last couple of years because of COVID, so I'm hoping I can, can go up there and support a Meadowbrook wrestler.
Okay, thank you. Special education, Jude Black.
Hi, everybody, tonight I have a presentation on a program called Cult Club Basketball. I want to share with you, before I turn it over to our two lead coaches, Mrs. Jan Ross and Jessie Boland, that this is a program at no cost to our district. We partner with Guernsey County Board of Developmental Disabilities, we write a grant to participate with the Guernsey County Schools of Cambridge and East Guernsey, and we participate in this program, which is run through that organization, so they fund everything. This is a program available to our middle school and high school special needs students, and with COVID, it's been a little bit challenging this year, but I think, as you're going to see tonight, the ladies are going to present something that's pretty special. And as Mr. Wheeler suggests, we have great pride in our athletics, and we are excited to share that with you tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Jan Ross and Jessie Boland.
Well, I was nominated to do all the talking. We had 16 students participate, and we have really grown this program since its inception. We play with Buckeye Trail and Cambridge, and this year, because. And this year, because we had so many and they had so few, we, um, had times where some of our players played with, uh, the other teams, and it really worked out well. Jessie and I were talking the other day that, um, we saw real growth, not just in skill level, but in team, um, growth there, they really were playing as a team. We have some that come in and they hardly know how to dribble with their heads straight ahead and, um, and walking down the court. And then we have others that are very agile and adept at basketball. They were able, um, at first, you know, they were being the ones that were dribbling down the court and shooting and, um, not paying much attention to the other team members. And as the time went on, they really grew in their ability to, um, share the ball and pass the ball and, um, share the glory, you might want to say. So they really grew in teamwork. Um, Jessie created, um, a PowerPoint, and Sarah's going to play that. And I just want to do a shout-out to Jeff Wheeler and to Jude, um, really supportive in helping us get gyms, and, um, we had to get more jerseys, because we didn't have enough jerseys. So that was really cool.
Just in true fashion as well, I have to say, um, Rolling Hills did a great job of filling the stands every game. And I do know that was brought to my attention, and I apologize, this is all on me, and I'm going to do a better job of getting it out there. This year, we had to reschedule probably five times, so these ladies were, uh, worked very hard behind the scenes with the other coaches. Um, these are two of our, you know, our staff members. Uh, Mrs. Ross is at Seacrest, Jessie's filling in as a long-term sub at the middle school. But this just is another example of how our staff goes above and beyond. Um, very powerful to see the stands filled. I appreciate, uh, Mr. Wheeler as well to open up our gyms as the other schools did. But it's always proud to see, uh, to come in and have all those stands filled. Our Rolling Hills families did a great job supporting our cult club players. Next up, we're excited to have a track team, so look for that in the next coming, coming months.
Are you two going to oversee the trip?
And they add a third, because we have so many.
Sure.
That are participating, and to keep the safety and the, and they are very well-trained, and, um, thanks for administrators. They keep these ladies trained as far as safety, as far as our players, and they're very well knowledgeable about sports, and we do appreciate it. So we'll be adding a third coach at the next time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Okay, Curriculum Director Molly back there.
That's hard to follow. Um, okay, in response to what Gail was talking about with Reflex, I just want to make sure you know that that is a program that we do have for K through five. Um, so, and it is very well-received in all the buildings, and the kids really do benefit that with that. And it does align directly with the new math PD that we're doing and all the alignment that we're doing with our math curriculum. We also adopted a program called FRACs, which is a sister to Reflex for fractions. So we are using that in, at Brook Intermediate, and it has been an extreme success as well. Um, we are continuing our work with our ELA literacy and math alignment and lessons. We did reschedule PD that we were supposed to do in February, um, to honor the teachers, because they've been out so much with snow days, we wanted to keep them in the classroom as much as possible. So we did move that to the end of the year. Um, McKinney-Vento Grant and, and the Esther Federal Programs were pulled for desk reviews. So I've been very busy working with, um, those partners to try to gather the data and submit that information for a time review. Um, we secured the safety grant again this year, um, and that can be used to support our school resource officer in training and to support anything that we have to implement with our school safety plans. So we're very grateful that, that we've received that grant yet again. Um, we've been working, the technology department and I've been working together, um, to make sure that we are, um, funding the EC, ECF grant for Chromebooks and hotspots for our students. Um, those are on their way here, um, we'll be getting those out to students very soon. Um, and we are also working on policies and procedures and the processes for rolling out the high school Chromebooks for next year. Um, our PBIS team, the district team met, um, we established our goals and developed work groups, and we're working all the, on the processes and the procedures to roll out district and building PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. Um, we're rolling that out for twenty-two, twenty-three, which is a law, we have to do that, but it's best practice, and it's what we need for our students. That also includes developing lessons for teachers to teach within the classroom, incentives for students for positive behaviors, um, common discipline systems and referral programs across the district, uh, which will really help with the streamlining of discipline, um, having norms for those referrals, and a data system to monitor that, so we can look at location, time, date, to try to figure out where our issues are and be able to make corrective actions to that. So we're looking forward to getting that in place. Um, the BLT met in January, um, and we were really excited to review the fall, and I was excited to review the data. I think they liked it, um, we reviewed the fall and the winter data, um, from our map system and our STAR system, which are assessments that we put in place to kind of benchmark how our students are doing. Like Dawn had mentioned, how they were impressed with what their data is showing, and it, it, the systems that we're putting in place are working. Uh, we did see growth in both math and literacy across the district. So, uh, we also looked at our goals and made sure that we aligned our goals so that everything we're doing in the district makes sense. Um, and we created action steps to be sure we're on task for making changes in the district. Um, I've been working with the ECO ESC preschool supervisor to review our early literacy data and our kindergarten readiness data, um, and discuss the areas of concern and strikes along the trends over time so that we can begin to make some changes there as needed. Um, I've also been working with the ESC to ensure alignment to the new dyslexia law that's coming. Um, well, the law's already out, but the implementation of that, which starts next year. Um, that includes training our staff, straining our students, and the policies and procedures that we need in place. We are really blessed in this district that we have the Striving Readers Grant that set us up to be in the best place we could possibly be. Um, we have all of our teachers K.A.-trained, and they will be certified as dyslexia-trained, which is amazing. A lot of districts have zero staff, so we have the, oh, Orton-Gillingham, you've probably heard OG curriculum in place. There are a few minor exceptions, some new staff, a couple of people that still need training, but we basically K.A. are trained. We also, we still need to train our high school staff and ELA and our intervention staff, but we're waiting on the finalized Dyslexia Guidebook to tell us exactly which screeners we're allowed to use and exactly which intervention specialists need trained. I've been working with Jude on that so that we can get that set up. But we've seen a huge growth and improvement by integrating OG integrity into our curriculum, so our kids are improving in literacy, which, when we look at preschool data, is the biggest area of concern. Literacy is the lowest. Um, I've been working with resident educators, uh, year three has submitted all their assessments, and we're eagerly awaiting those results. Um, years one, two, and four are finalizing their mentor work. Um, we have a great team of mentors, I'm so impressed by our staff, and I hope that we continue to have such valuable mentors working with our new, uh, new teachers. Um, they do a fabulous job with this entry-year staff. We'll be transitioning to a new two-year program, right now it's a four-year program. Um, the state still doesn't know how that's going to look, so we're eagerly awaiting results from that so that we can figure out how that's going to transition in twenty-twenty-three. Um, and I'm excited to tell you that we are going to be participating. I've been working with, uh, Dawn and Gail, um, and Shelley on the First Annual Guernsey County Reading Festival. It's a read-a-thon, it will be Saturday, March sixth, from ten to three at Pritchard-Loughlin. This is an event for students in K-eight. All students will receive a free book, and they will be able to experience literacy activities. So there'll be community and different area agencies, including our school and all the Guernsey County schools. We'll each have tables set up with some type of a literate, literacy activity, um, around the theme of Olympics and sports. So we've already got our idea together, we've got our table together, we have teachers that will be manning that table and working with the students in the county. Um, they will also have Pete the Cat and Paddington Bear there, and we have some high school volunteers who are going to dress up and be part of that and be runners to help that event, so that'll be fun. Um, and students will participate in read-alouts and literacy activities throughout the day. So it's another way to get the community support. So, it's been busy.
Okay, thank you, I want to thank all of you, it's great to have everybody here tonight.
Yeah.
And, uh, we really appreciate it. Okay, Item B, we have Michael Myers here with Fanny.
Your turn.
Howie? Is that, Howie?
Yeah, close enough. So, hello, I, yeah, I'm going to apologize, because we're starting out. Those of you in the building committee here probably know, I didn't select my computer in, and it never seems to run very well. So I'm going to grab my battery.
Okay.
I want to hear the architect say close.
What'd he call her?
He's going to be right back.
Okay. She went to get her iPad. No, she went to get her iPad. Because on the screen, this is something, this is the longest board, maybe you had.
Yeah, this is going to take a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Michael, would you like the lights out?
This is exciting.
I, I, you know, it, it's up to you guys, it depends on, I think you might be able to see a little bit better if, if the lights were out, yeah. All right, so, uh, first of all, let me, let me start off with by saying, you know, thanks to the district, and, uh, we've been working very closely with the, uh, the building committee in going through the initial phases of starting the project and starting the design. And we're, we're coming to, um, the end of one of the first stages of the design process, which is called schematic design. So as a group, we've been going through and doing a lot of the, uh, initial planning for the building. And this includes, you know, developing how many rooms needed to be in the building, and then looking at the layout or the adjacencies of the room, as well as taking some initial looks at the site planning as well for the project. So what we wanted to present tonight was an update, I know several people have seen this already, uh, but we wanted to present an update just of the, the current schematic design plan, the overall concept for the site, and the overall concept for the building. Uh, we'll then enter into the next phase, which is going to be starting in, in March here. And the next phase is where we start to do more planning in detail with the staff about bringing, coming in and talking to us about all the components that need to go in the classroom and how the classrooms are set up and configured to each grade level's needs and uses. So that's, that's upcoming here as we start into March, and I think we have the first, uh, round of staff meetings starting March eleventh, we're going to probably have some, a few individual staff meetings before that. I know we're working on kind of getting that coordinated right now, so. Uh, and I'll apologize again, I have my back to you, so, um, but I need to do that as I'm driving here with the, uh, the PDF. So, uh, on the screen, you can kind of see the overall site here of the campus. Of course, we're not showing the stadium, uh, to the south, uh, but we have, uh, Brook's Intermediate over here. And again, that's noted as status to be determined. Uh, the board is, is continuing to evaluate their options with that, and I think they have a timeline, uh, in agreement with OFCC to, uh, come to a decision on that in the next couple of months here as we're moving forward. Um, we are also showing over here at the middle school, and it's noted as, uh, being demolished, uh, and then that will potentially become open lawn area, which is, you know, again, we're showing, uh, for just relationship of size, uh, a typical soccer or football field area, and that would just be open lawn in the future. And we'll still have to work out and develop, you know, the driveway and the parking lot around that. Uh, but we do believe in some of the early planning, the initial, I, concept is that that building will, will most likely be demolished moving forward. So then you can see to the north end of the site, we have the, uh, existing high school and the existing main drive over here off of eight-twenty-one. So that main drive will continue to be there, uh, we'll be reworking that drive so that main drive comes in and then will split off to a new parking area in this location, and then another driveway that will circulate around and go to a parking lot in this location, which will be where the main entry is. The main entry will be a point that, where the two buildings, the existing building and the new elementary addition, which is what you see out in this area, uh, will connect. And then, because of the construction and the placement of the building, uh, we have to create, uh, or replace parking that would be lost. And the OFCC has up to three-hundred-and-seventy-three parking spaces that they co-op on this part of the project. So we have not only parking here, the parking lot that I mentioned over here, but we also have a vet parking right here. And additional parking will now be created back here where the current band practice field is. That'll be one of the first things that you see happen on the project as construction starts to move forward, uh, because the district will lose the use of a portion of the, the front parking lot here. And so that will be why we need to construct the new parking lot first so that events and student parking can move to an alternative location during the construction process. So let me zoom in here just a little bit on this. You can kind of see the, the circulation here a little bit better in this plan. Um, right now, we are tentatively planning at the main entrance drive to widen that. So not only is there one lane in, but there would be a left-turn lane out and a right-turn lane out. Uh, there still needs to be additional, um, studies done, traffic impact studies, on whether or not there's any other improvements that are going to be required out there. Uh, you know, and that may involve signalization, it may involve widening eight-twenty-one or putting turn lanes on. We don't know yet until that traffic impact study is done. So as you can see, as you come into the site, uh, you see the elementary building sitting here, and we have this overlaid on the existing area, so you can see the relationship of the new area. These are the academic wings here, this is kind of the central core of the elementary addition, the gymnasium clearly identifiable, and then the administration area here. So as you can see, it'll sit atop these existing parking areas. Uh, this parking lot right now, we're tentatively believing that would be a good location for elementary staff parking. Uh, in the back here, at the event, we're looking at this as being a, a prime location for, uh, bus drop-off, so buses could stage up here and pick up groups of students, and then more buses could come in and sequence through that. Uh, so this would be bus, and then potentially also student. So this would be bus and then potentially also student and event parking in this area as well. As we go around the back of the building, the existing driveways will still be there, but we'll be resurfacing this and adding or expanding parking here so that staff can park in the back. And then again, depending on final input from various committees, we'll look at whether or not this wants to be student parking back here as well. But this will certainly work as event overflow parking also, because this event lot is getting smaller here in the front of the building because of the new addition. So we'll have event parking now here and here, that'll come in the back entrance to the gym also. Driveway will continue around the building and then we'll have a new parking lot here. This is intended primarily for parent drop-off and for visitor parking and some limited staff parking for administration or those folks that are close to this portion of the building here. So the intent is with the drop-off, a parent drop-off being here, is that we have a nice long staging line that'll queue up for traffic to come in, circulate around, and then exit back out, kind of goes off the sheet there, and then exit back out to the main entry. This is, as it gets to this point here, it becomes two lanes of one-way traffic, allowing for more stacking of traffic. And also, as you get to the building, it continues to be two lanes so that if someone's dropping off a student and there's a little delay there, there's still room for traffic to move and go around them and continue keeping the flow going. There's also real quickly here, separate entrances. So parent drop-off occurring here in the morning, dropping students off. The middle high school students would continue over here and use the existing main high school entry to come into the building. The elementary students would actually have a separate entry to come into the elementary side of the building, right into their proposed dining area. Same is true in the bus drop-off. The high school students would utilize the existing gymnasium entry to come into the building. I should say, middle high school students. And the elementary students have an entrance here that comes right into the back of the academic areas. So again, we're trying to keep a separation of bus traffic and car traffic, but we're also keeping a separation of the older students and the younger students so that they're following different paths as they go into the building. So that is currently the site plan that we have. And let's take a quick look at the overall building plan. To the top of the sheet here, I'm sure you recognize, this is the existing high school area. And then we have to the bottom here, this is the new elementary school addition. But there is also a small addition over here, which is what we often refer to as the Cole College, or it's also career tech programming as well, basically classroom and space in there. And so that will be in this location. That's about a 6,000, 7,000 square foot addition there. And the elementary is right around, I want to say around 81,000 square foot addition. And so this is primarily a one-story wing here on this side of the building, but this wing here will be a two-story academic wing. The core of the building here is a two-story height, just because of the high-volume spaces such as the gymnasium and the dining columns. Let me blow this up a little bit so we can take a little closer look at it. This is the elementary school addition on the first floor. And as you can see, the green rooms over here, these are the elementary administration offices. So there's the principal's office, itinerant offices, workroom, there's a clinic space in there, as well as the reception area. The lighter green down here are guidance offices, as well as guidance record storage and a staff dining area. The blue area here is student dining area. We have a kitchen in the gray here, and then this is mechanical or building services in the back here. This will be the new elementary gymnasium, but it has been designed to function as the middle school competition gym after hours as well. So it does have some locker room spaces, as well as bleacher seating in here and a high school-sized basketball court. We have some support restrooms here. We have the music room, elementary music here, elementary art here. And now we go into the two primary academic areas. So on this side over here, we have three pre-K classrooms and five kindergarten classrooms. All the pre-K and the kindergarten classrooms will have their own individual restroom in the room so students can stay in that space. We have five first-grade classrooms here, and they will actually have a group restroom along with a staff restroom right here that'll service that area. We have two special education self-contained rooms, again, also with its own restroom centrally located there. And then we have some instructional materials, support and teacher workroom areas here. We also have a new elevator right here, which will provide ADA accessibility to the second floor. There's a grand stair here as well for students. And then we have again, in this wing, this will primarily be second and third grade classrooms on the first floor, with fourth and fifth grade being on the second floor. And again, the intention was the older kids, having them on the second floor, they're more adaptable to going up and down the stairs than the younger children. So again, we have the classrooms here, and we have some special education support rooms here. These are work rooms or small group rooms for intervention and just small groups and tutoring, so a variety of different uses that these rooms will function as. In between the classrooms, we actually have a very large wide-open area. This is really about an 18-foot wide area, so probably as wide as this room, I would say. And so that's where there will be student lockers out there, but there'll also be a lot of casual seating, and we call this an extended learning area, so that students can come out of the classroom, go out into this central area, gather and work on projects and collaboration together. The second floor, again, this portion of the building is two-story. The second floor is for the fourth and fifth grades setup, same similar configuration as the first floor, same classroom layouts, special education rooms, support rooms. But we do have a mechanical space down here, which is what we call a fan deck. That's where the air handlers will be, that will be for heating and cooling. These buildings will be air-conditioned. And so that's a central location there for accessing the building. This is, again, the existing high school, and we're showing the reprogramming, different uses that will be occurring now in the building. First of all, I'll just mention again, the Cole College and the CT programs here. So we have a variety of classrooms and open space here for student learning. Again, the green being the administration, the guidance and support functions in here, along with the student clinic as well for high school. On this side of the building, we have primarily the high school academic classrooms. They will also have an open extended learning area right in here. So we're going to be demolishing and taking out portions of the existing walls to kind of open this up. Again, they'll have a teacher workroom, as well as the special education support rooms. The area back here, which is currently the band area and music suites, that will now become a science area. So there's three science classrooms for high school and one large common science lab. The theater will remain here. We're doing a little bit of work in there with some improvements and upgrades in that space as well. As we come over here, we have the middle school academic classrooms, so that surrounds the perimeter here. They also will have an open ELA area in the middle, and that's extended learning area. And we'll, again, punch holes in the wall to kind of open this up, give it a little wider, open feeling. There are high school special education self-contained classrooms with restroom and kitchenette as well, group restrooms for students, middle school science rooms here, art, new music suite for band and vocal. Voag is being refreshedened, and then we'll be doing quite extensive renovations in the locker room area here, creating and revising those locker rooms to be two new varsity teen locker rooms and two PE locker rooms, so boys and girls one each on each side here. And there's also some space to accommodate perhaps a future expansion for a local clinic to provide services in the building as well. So there is some space allocation for that. Kitchen remains the same, and student dining will actually downsize a little bit. We'll be putting a new technology center here, which is where the main computers of the building are supported, and then a new flexible classroom on the other side. Of course, we'll be doing some improvements and refinishing within the gymnasium itself. So that's a basic overview of the layout. And then the last thing I want to do here real quickly, and I apologize, I don't have the music. Your presentation was great, but I don't have music. Is just to do, as we design all of this and go through our meetings, we develop this in three dimensions as well. And, you know, I will tell you, there's a lot of things you're going to see in here that are wrong, mistakes, incomplete, still need to be worked on. But this really helps us as a team in the district to visualize these spaces and what they're going to be instead of just looking at two-dimensional plans. So we can take this and obviously we can, you know, what you're seeing here is the new Cole College area. This is the new administration. This is potentially the new main entrance, although I think we have some design options that we're still going to look at and evaluate with some of the committees. This is the new student dining area for the elementary and the new academic wing for the elementary.
Very cool.
And if I go too fast, just tell me to slow down, because, you know, I made myself sick.
It is an open staircase and it's just a glass front.
Yes, that is correct, yeah. So again, this would be, and I did not mention on the site plan, but on this location here, this would be the PKK first grade playground area. On the other side of the building is the 2-5 playground area, so they have separate playground areas as well. And then as we go around the building, again, you see the windows. The gymnasium is where you see those three windows there in the background, the new elementary gym. So that's to help get, you know, some diffuse light in there. Of course, now you're starting to see the existing building. I won't really go around the existing building from the outside. There really aren't many changes to the features of the existing building, other than we may be looking at painting some of the orange panels, which are an infill between the windows to kind of tongue that down to match in with the new building schemes. Let's take a moment here maybe and go into the Cole College area. So again, this is a nice tall space. This is intended, you know, again, to be a learning area, so there'll be a lot of casual seating in here, lots of windows for students to get good natural daylight and connectivity to the outside, lots of windows here to what will be distant learning labs. Down this corridor, we'll have some additional classrooms and a computer lab. There's some support spaces in here. So this is all new areas, office area as well. This is now the connector that ties into the existing high school. So right now, in the existing high school, we're not showing a lot of feature changes. Again, we're not showing colors and a lot of interior finish or fit-out in here, but you can see the intention is we'll be changing the lockers to double-tier lockers. That'll open up some of the wall space. This is where we're looking at removing some of that wall to have this a more open environment here. We'll probably be changing some of these. This is the current door and window into the admin area. We'll probably open this up as we move forward so there's more visual connection into this space and also from the classrooms. So as we go back towards the science rooms here, again, we'll be refinishing and replacing toilet fixtures and sinks in the restrooms and redoing the finishes there. This will be the new science area. So again, they'll have several small, or well, you know, there's thousands of square foot classrooms that are here. They'll also have their own kind of little commons area here between the classrooms so that they can come out into this space and do some experiments. You know, there will be a door there, not a wall, a hard door. And then there'll be a new large science lab with plenty, plenty of storage and all the gas and sinks and services that the science area needs. We'll head over to the auditorium. So we'll be doing some work, refinishing the stage, replacing the seating in here. We'll be replacing the ceiling as well as part of the process to add fire suppression and new mechanical systems in here. We're also replacing the main stage curtain and balance. Now we're heading back towards the entry. Again, as we continue to move forward, I'm sure we'll be adding more color and making different changes in these areas to freshen them up and lighten them up a little bit. We just haven't gotten to the point of showing that. This leads down to the middle school, and I'll run through that in just a moment. Sorry, actually, I went through the roof there. This is the existing dining area, and again, we'll be adding some new rooms here on the left and on the right and adjusting this space. So again, we'll be taking a look at ceiling modifications in there. this is the existing gym entry. New middle school science rooms will be in these existing high school science rooms. Again, we'll be doing some finish work and bleacher replacement in the gym.
Bleachers won't be blue.
Yes, I've already been cautioned on that.
More than once.
Are there any plans to make the gym a 94-foot floor?
No, because of the non-bearing wall, it can't.
Correct.
Be nice, could get some regional games, but yeah, it is what it is.
So we'll have some new teen locker rooms here, so we'll have new lockers. Right now, this is intended, these will be more of the stadium or teen-style lockers. Of course, they'll also have restroom support and shower space, not in the quantity of showers that are back there now, but still have some shower space. And then there'll be a PE, PE, which will be more of the day-to-day locker room. And so this will be the PE locker room with wall hooks and benches in here for support bags for students, and then it does also have showers and restroom facility. And then it does also have showers and restroom facilities in the back as well.
That'll serve as a visiting locker room after hours.
There's also coaches' offices and training room and some other support spaces in this area as well. The Voag again will get refreshedened as well. And right now in the Voag room, as I'm heading over that way, we're looking to take what is kind of a temporary classroom in there now and construct that more as a permanent classroom. Look through the door. So so this will now be a permanent classroom and still have the lab space here. And again, this will get freshened up. So let me, now that we've kind of, again, we haven't really gotten too far into the
About the music rooms, Michael.
Yeah, I'll head that way. We're coming down to the music rooms. So the band area, which is now located on this side of the building, will have a nice good sound isolation from the academics and have their own kind of suite location here. So we'll have a new vocal room here, a new vocal room with storage space in the back. There'll be a new office that connects the vocal room with the instrumental room for the instructors. And then there'll be a new instrumental room, again, with very large storage space back here as well. Also have exterior door access here. And we still have to kind of refine and some staff input. Well, I'm sorry, this is the practice room. This, the coiling door here, if we want to keep that or change that to a different door type. So that'll have a nice wide access to bringing equipment in and out of this space as well. So we'll head back to the middle school area. Anybody need a break?
You don't have to go back. Actually, we added a whole big classroom back here in the locker room area.
That is true. There is, there is a classroom back there as well.
Well, I'm just saying, we did that back there. We added a whole big classroom that was oversized.
So this is, these are now middle school classrooms. And then on the right here, again, we're going to open the walls up so that they have a large extended learning area as well. And then as we continue down the corridor here, we're going to come up on, will now be the new high school, middle school reception area and the new main entry into the building. So this is the high school reception area here. This will be the new main entry. Again, we still have some, some work to do. Sorry. Being a little picky about letting it through. There we go. So there'll be a ramp. The elementary addition right now, the floor elevation is roughly three feet lower than the high school floor elevation. That's because of the existing grading condition. So we're still working through that to see if there's any adjustments there. But there is ADA ramp, accessibility as well as stairs. We have the administration suite here for the elementary. Again, there'll be all new offices, conference rooms, guidance area, a back entrance here into the administration area. And then we go into the new elementary student dining area. Large, high-volume space, lots of window, daylight, plenty of room for the kids. The restroom right there, ahead of us, the new gymnasium. Again, some windows for natural daylight into the space. Head towards the academic area. New staircase. This will be the entry point for the bus drop off. To the right, you can see the second, third grade areas. To the left are the kindergarten, first grade, pre-k. First grade group restroom. Sinks are out in the corridor area, so the teachers can wash the kids, make sure they're washing their hands. And then this is a kindergarten classroom. And we've taken the liberty to show just some initial layout of furniture in the classroom based on the OFCC design guidelines. And so this is what we'll start reviewing with staff's input, the cubbies, the storage case work, the sinks, the furniture in the room, the marker boards, the technology, the outlets, all the things that go in the room. Again, each one of these kindergarten and pre-k classrooms will also have its own restroom as well. And with the sinks, the sinks can be provided with bubblers. So the students don't have to run out in the hall to get a drink. They can get a drink right in the classroom. And we'll go back to the second and third grade. The little nook under the stairs here, we'll be looking at that, creating some play space under there. Some cozy, comfortable area where kids can sit under here and read or do different activities. Hide away if they need to. New elevator is the reflective door there. New lockers. Again, from second through third, fourth, and fifth, we'll have lockers. Group restroom for the kids. And then this is the extended learning area we were talking about and the classrooms. So lots of, right now, lots of windows so teachers can look out and get daylight into the rooms and keep an eye on kids if they're out in the common areas here, the open stairwell. Some special ed support rooms and more classrooms. And then if I go up to the second floor, again, same configuration on the second floor as the first floor is. So it has the same appearance, but again, with colors and finishes, there's a lot of different things we can do to make this look and appear different. And then also, you know, we're not showing right now the furniture that can be out here making this a more casual and comfortable seating area. So we're not to that point that we're showing that information. So that is kind of a quick walkthrough. This is a typical second, third grade classroom. Again, just to initiate conversation with staff about, you know, what needs to be in the rooms and how the rooms can be laid out. So we'll be going through that information and adjusting based on their input. So that kind of takes us back outside. So I know that's kind of a lot of information, but that's kind of the update as to where we're at.
So the extended learning areas are what we used to call study halls, right? When did study hall become extended learn? I'm telling my age here.
Yeah, it depends on how you use it.
Yeah.
The website?
Yes, there's also a website. I don't have it.
We are going to send that to staff tomorrow and then email the website and the link to the website. And we're putting it on the, our Rolling Hills website. So all staff will have access to it.
So what you'll see on the website is
If I do not email to you if I forget, send me an email and I will send it to you.
Yeah, you'll see on the website some of the current floor plan information. You can also see from some of our earlier meetings, just some of the development and, you know, how we got to some of the site plans that we went through and then some of the floor plans that we went through.
There's a lot of information on there. And there's renderings and drawings.
A lot of the stuff.
Not the walkthrough.
Not the walkthrough. And I do want to thank Michael. When we get to my report, I mean, we're just now to the point where we can approve their contract. They have not been paid at all for all this work they have done. I mean, the state has delayed it. There's been a lot of issues that they have worked through. And I have begged a lot for them to keep working and they have gladly kept working without being paid. And I mean, we truly appreciate all the work he's put in.
Well, no problem. We recognize how important it is to the district to get this project moving. And, you know, we just needed to keep things moving so that we didn't lose the four months there, so.
Does that happen a lot in situations like this?
It's been delayed for a while.
In your experience, have you had this with other districts?
It can't, let me put it this way, it can happen, yes. It, I can't say it's regularly, it happens, but it does.
So we're not the first.
Not always.
All right.
Good luck. Molly and I are having trouble with the oak system, so we'll pay eventually. Soon as we figure it out.
Mike, I just want to thank you. I know that, you know, when we selected you guys, we realized that you saw the vision too. That we saw, so.
I appreciate it. Again, we're really anxious to start, you know, because I know staff's anxious to sit down and start going through the information. And we really look forward to that coming up in the next couple of weeks to get that process started moving forward as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, item number nine, treasurer's report.
Okay, I have a verbal minutes for in January 27th and February 9th. Approve a financial report in January. Approve a three-year lease with ComDoc. This is copier. We will be getting all new copiers in August. We decided, James and I talked superintendent yesterday, we decided three year would probably be best now because we're going to be going into the building project. We're allowed keeping those, like we will own them, so we can keep them after, after the three years if they're still working. But we hate to sign a five-year lease and have to try to move all these copiers in the building. So we want to keep the lease, you know, current with the building project. Group selecting, this is the CMR contract. And E is the architect contract for the building project.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Humphrey.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Dully?
Yes.
Mr. Yerick?
Yes.
All right. We should, yeah, we should discuss that. Okay, we're on item number 10, standing committees. Dennis was on policy.
Why don't we wait until we get the new person?
Do you want to wait?
That makes sense.
Because we want to fill it up and then have
Good point.
That makes sense.
Okay, does anybody have any standing committee reports?
The only thing I've said is, thanks for getting the, thank Mr. Goldwick for getting those lights. The parking lots loaded up for the sporting events, a big hit. That's all I have on that. Hopefully we get the lights fixed.
The older ladies are very happy.
All right.
And we know that's all.
All right, we don't have anybody here with item B. So we'll move on to business. No business? Okay, superintendent's report, Mr. Goldwick.
Yep, superintendent would like to recommend letter A. I'm not going to go through all those people that we are hiring. Most of those are supplemental contracts. Letter B, accept the following retirement from Kathy Hessen. And I would just like to say, I worked with Kathy for two years and Kathy does a phenomenal job. So we want to thank her for her service here at Meadowbrook. We will miss her. She does an excellent job and she is very good with the kids. Letter C, accept the following resignation from Haley West. And that's the, for a 21st century paraprofessional. Approve the changes to the community engagement seal as presented. You have that. Approve the following overnight trip for DECA, which is Mrs. Hessen is in charge of, from March 10th through 11th of 2022, and that's in Columbus, Ohio. And then letter F, recommend the Board of Education for approval in agreement with the RHAA and also the OT Union. Basically, what we're doing is taking two days that were off. Staff was off, March 11th and April 18th, and they're coming in and working it for the snow days. And the March 11th date, we'll be working with Vinnie and Howie and going through building. And then on April 18th, we will be doing some professional development. Don't know exactly everything yet, meeting next week on that. So superintendent recommends letters A through F at this time.
Okay, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Yerick?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got one more.
That's right.
Superintendent also recommends letter G, hiring Sidney Singleton language arts teacher seven through 12.
Okay, motion?
Mr. Humphrey?
Mr. Humphries? Do I have a second?
Motion.
Any discussion?
Yes. Is this the one that you had the?
Yes, Beth Weston, if I can explain.
Sure.
Beth Weston, been with the district a long time. Had some health issues and everything. She was hoping to retire this summer and found out that she had to put in an extra half a year, kind of like Kathy Hessen's doing. So when we interviewed for the ninth grade English position, we had two candidates we really liked. And the second one was Sidney Singleton, so we worked out a deal with her that we would hire her when Mrs. Weston officially retired. And she would subforce in the meantime, we'd kind of, you know, try to keep her, try to keep her busy in the meantime, which hasn't been a problem this year. So Mrs. Weston has now officially retired and we, Sidney Singleton ended the position. And she filled in with, she filled in for Mrs. Weston all last year when she was out with the health issues, by the way, as well, so.
So you got a committee of people?
Yes.
Thank you.
I wasn't on the committee, Brad.
I wasn't on the committee.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Dully?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
I'm staying.
Mr. Yerick?
Yes.
No correspondence.
No correspondence, no informational items?
No, sir.
All right, move to, in the executive session, to consider the employment of a public employee or official and to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or state, or law or regulations, state statutes. And there'll be no action taken after executive session. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Dully?
Yes.
Mr. Yerick?
Yes.
What time is it?
7:58.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks everybody. Appreciate it.